Welcome to the Federalist Society's virtual event. This afternoon, October 14th, we discuss the DOJ, domestic terrorism, and school boards. My name is Evelyn Hildebrandt, and I'm an Associate Director of Practice Groups of the Federalist Society. As always, please note that all expressions of opinion are those of the expert on today's call. Today, we are fortunate to have with us Mr. Michael B. McCasey, a judge, former Attorney General of the United States, and currently practicing law in New York State. We're very, very pleased to have him join us this afternoon. Judge McCasey was the United States Attorney General from November 2007 to January 2009, and he was District Judge in the United States District Court for the Southern District of New York from 1988 to 2006. He was the Chief Judge in the year 2000. So, very pleased to welcome him this afternoon. After our speaker gives opening remarks, we will turn to audience questions. If you have a question, please enter it into the Q and A at the bottom of your screen, and we will handle questions as we can in the order that they're received. You can enter questions at any time, so please, please make use of that function. With that, thank you for being with us today. Judge McCasey, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, everyone, and thanks to everybody who's on this webinar. I, as you've been told, the immediate occasion for this gathering is a memorandum from the Attorney General. It's a memorandum dated October 4, and the subject matter is, "Partnership Among Federal, State, Local, Tribal, and Territorial Law Enforcement to Address Threats Against School Administrators, Board Members, Teachers, and Staff." Now, I'm going to get into the substance of the memo such as it is, and there's not a whole lot in a moment, but I should tell you that this entire episode, the background and the memo itself, remind me of nothing so much as the placemats that they used to have in rest stops along the highway that were there to amuse the children while they were waiting for the food. And the placemats would have an illustration carrying the question, "What's wrong with this picture?" And invariably, the picture would show somebody without a shoe, and a table without a leg, and an airplane flying upside down. And the children were expected to amuse themselves by picking out all the things that were wrong with the picture. This memo is really very much the same. It begins, after the subject matter line that I gave you, by stating that, "In recent months, there has been a disturbing spike in harassment, intimidation, and threats of violence against school administrators, board members, teachers, and staff who participate in the vital work of running our nation's public schools. While spirited debate about policy matters is protected under our Constitution, that protection does not extend to threats of violence or efforts to intimidate individuals based on their views." Now, you might ask yourself, I suppose, what the federal jurisdiction is over the matters raised in that opening? And we're going to wonder some more about that when we get into the body of this, further into the body of this memo. But passing that, and the author of the memo passes it, by not describing what the federal jurisdiction is. He says, "The department takes these incidents serious and is committed to using its authority and resources to discourage these threats, identify them when they occur, and prosecute them when appropriate. In the coming days, the department will announce a series of measures designed to address the rise in criminal conduct directed towards school personnel." Now, notice, we've gone from a spike in harassment, intimidation, and threats of violence, all of it unspecified, to a statement that we're dealing with here is, "Criminal conduct directed towards school personnel." The memo goes on to say that, "The meetings will facilitate the discussion of strategies for addressing threats against school administrators, board members, teachers, and staff, and will open dedicated lines of communication for threat reporting, assessment, and response." Again, no description of precisely what it is, what activity it is we're talking about. "The department is steadfast in its commitment to protect all people in the United States from violence, threats of violence, and other forms of intimidation and harassment," and that's where it ends. The addressees on this memo are the Director of the FBI, the Assistant Attorney General in charge of the Criminal Division, and all United States Attorneys. Interestingly, one other addressee, the only other addressee on the memo, is the Director of the Executive Office for U.S. Attorneys. Now, I don't know whether any of you are familiar with what the job is of the Executive Office for U.S. Attorneys. It has nothing to do with law enforcement. The Executive Office for U.S. Attorneys provides administrative support and resource allocation to U.S. Attorneys' offices. It also does reports on whether U.S. Attorneys' offices are functioning properly. Here, the unmistakable message, it seems to me, among other things, is that the U.S. Attorneys' offices had better conform their investigative conduct and activities to the priorities set forth in this memo, or the Executive Office for U.S. Attorneys will give them a bad report, and their resources will suffer as a result. That's only part of what's threatened by the memo. Taken in the large, because of the absence of any cited federal jurisdictional basis for either investigation or prosecution, it begins to look, simply from the memo itself, as if the process is, in fact, what's at stake here, rather than the ultimate result, the process being investigation. One might ask, I guess, how the memo came to be, what occasioned it? According to the reports that I've seen, what occasioned it was a letter five days earlier, September 29, from an entity called the National School Boards Association, which went not to the Attorney General, but to the President, and requested, quote, "Immediate assistance to protect our students, school board members, and educators who are susceptible to acts of violence affecting interstate commerce because of threats to their districts, families, and personal safety." Now, notice, even in this, this is only the second paragraph of the letter. The letter opened by stating that American Public Schools and its education leaders are under an immediate threat. At least, this letter suggests some concern about the question of federal jurisdiction by citing acts of violence affecting interstate commerce. The letter, by the way, nowhere describes such acts, but at least it shows some concern for the question of what the federal government is authorized to do. I should stop here and say that, for those who may not be specifically aware of it, the federal government has no general supervisory authority or police power to investigate even acts of violence. It has authority to do what it is statutorily authorized to do. And protecting school boards from outbursts at their meetings is not among the things that the federal government is authorized to investigate or prosecute, even assuming that prosecutable conduct would occur. That's something that generally is in the hands of the local authorities. The letter goes on to say that the organization, the National School Boards Association, specifically elicits the expertise and resources of the U.S. Department of Justice, Federal Bureau of Investigation, U.S. Department of Homeland Security, U.S. Secret Service, and its National Threat Assessment Center regarding the level of risk to public schoolchildren, educators, board members, and facilities, campuses. "We also request the assistance of the U.S. Postal Inspection Service to intervene against threatening letters and cyberbullying attacks that have been transmitted to students, school board members, district administrators, and other educators." And it then goes on to say that "These acts of malice, violence, and threats against public school officials have increased. The classification of these heinous actions could be the equivalent to a form of domestic terrorist and hate crimes." Now, that is a line that's gotten a good deal of publicity. How disruption of school board meetings is a form of domestic terrorism, again, is nowhere explained. You might, this letter obviously is longer than the Attorney General's memo. It goes on for five and a half single-page pages. The only specifics it presents are the following. It says that an individual was arrested in Illinois for aggravated battery and disorderly conduct during a school board meeting. Then during two school board meetings in Michigan, an individual yelled a Nazi salute in protest to masking requirements, and another individual prompted the school board to call a recess because of opposition to critical race theory. It goes on to say that there were similar incidents in various other states. And it says that anti-mask proponents are inciting chaos during school board meetings. "In Virginia, a man was arrested, another man was ticketed for trespassing, and a third person was hurt during a school board meeting discussion distinguishing current curricula from critical race theory regarding equity issues." Nowhere in this letter does it describe anything like an actual imminent threat. The only, the closest it comes is on the fourth page, it says, "In Ohio, an individual emailed a letter to a school board..." I'm sorry, an individual mailed a letter to a school board member labeling the return address on the envelope from a local neighborhood association, and then including threatening hate mail from another entity. "This correspondent states that we are coming after you and all the members of the Board of Education." The hate mail continues by stating, "You are forcing them to wear a mask for no reason in this world other than control, and for that you will pay dearly." That's it. That is the closest it comes to a mail threat. Now, there is actually one federal statute, Title 18, Section 876, that bars transmission of threats of harm to the recipient. But it has to be physical, it has to be an actual threat, and it has to be sent through the United States mails. This letter cited in the National School Board Association letter is the only example anybody has ever pointed to to something that could conceivably be the subject of a federal prosecution. And that's something that would be handled by the postal inspectors, not by the FBI. The timing, as I indicated, of the two letters is interesting. The National School Board Association letter is dated September 29, it's to the President. The Attorney General's memo is dated October 4. That's five days. And the notion that a memo could have been turned around in five days with all the consideration and examination that would be necessary by the various stakeholders, even within the department, makes it highly unlikely that that was actually the sequence, and that this was not something that was worked up in advance. Absolute advance, I think, appears in yet another letter, this one from an entity called America First Legal Foundation, to the Inspector General, urging the Inspector General to investigate the genesis of the Attorney General's memo and of the and of the the letter from the National School Boards Association. There are specific allegations in this letter that there was consultation among staff of the White House, staff of the Justice Department, that there would be a letter solicited from somebody who was not among the usual suspects as described in this letter, and a statement attributed to somebody at the Justice Department that the letter was to come from somebody who was not among the usual suspects, and that then there would be a response. If those conversations took place, then it appears that the entire effort is aimed simply at suppressing dissent. That, as it happens, when it's done by, regardless of whether it's done by federal officials or not, it just makes the chief more binding. But there is federal jurisdiction over that kind of activity, and it's contained in the Civil Rights Statutes. So, it's make it a crime for two or more persons to conspire to threaten or intimidate any person in any state, territory, commonwealth, possession, or district in the free exercise or enjoyment of any right or privilege secured to him by the Constitution or the laws of the United States. Acting in free and open debate is among those rights. If this activity was intended to suppress the exercise of those rights, then there's at least a colorable claim of a civil rights violation. Whether anything will eventuate from that or not, I have no idea. But certainly, the letter the America First Legal Foundation to the Inspector General at least triggers an investigation along those lines. I should mention, before I start taking questions, one additional aspect of this that's received some attention that I think is really of minimal importance, and that is the question of conflict of interest. The Attorney General's son-in-law, a man named Alexander Tanner, owns a company that is in the business, I would call Panorama Education, that is in the business, among other things, of distributing material that has been objected to by a number of people at these school board meetings and distributing questionnaires designed to introduce such material into curricula. He has contracts with various school boards, including school boards in Virginia. And there's been a suggestion that somehow the Attorney General, because he was writing a memo designed to discourage people from engaging in activity critical of a product that's being purveyed by his son-in-law, was therefore subject to, were therefore committed to violation of the conflict of interest rules. I don't know that putting money in his son-in-law's pockets was was any consideration at all. Appearances certainly are worth considering. But I think this is much more a matter of ideology than it is profit. In addition, it's pretty clear that even if he had recused himself, memo would have gone out, signed by somebody else within the Justice Department, perhaps the deputy, perhaps one of the Assistant AGs in charge of one of the divisions. But I don't think that's a serious issue, although it's one that's gotten a fair amount of attention. This has all been a somewhat disorderly presentation, partly because I think what I'm trying to do is impose order on something that doesn't have much. But I'll be happy to take questions and see whether perhaps we might help one another make more sense of this than as a parent from looking at it just on its face.
Thanks so much for such an excellent presentation. That did not sound disorderly at all, at least to my ears. It was a great, great explanation of what's going on at the moment. I do have a question of my own, and I would encourage our audience to please send in your questions. I know we have one question already that I will ask in just a moment. First, I wanted to ask if, in your experience, both as AG and as a judge, has there been another time where an external, I guess, third-party organization has written to the President and maybe even aside from the quick timeline of like a five-day-before response, but is there precedent for an external organization to write to the President and the DOJ to respond at all, apart from the quick timeline? Or is that also an unusual circumstance?
Well, I think that's somewhat unusual, although I wouldn't say that it's never happened. And I don't think that the fact that an outside organization wrote to the President and that that elicited a response from the Justice Department, just taking those facts without getting into the subject matter of the letter and the subject matter of the response, that that is necessarily improper. People have the right to petition the government. Organizations have the right to petition the government. And if the President thinks that something is worth the attention of the Justice Department, then the Attorney General serves at his pleasure, and he can refer it to the Justice Department. That part of it, simply those mechanics, leaving out the timing and certainly leaving out the subject matter, that's not the part that bothers me or that I think bothers anyone else. It's the underlying subject matter.
Okay, that makes sense. Actually, I think, following on those comments, Pete Hutchinson, an attendee, asks, "What would a normal sequence look like in terms of process and timing?"
Well, assuming that the President sent a letter like this to the Justice Department, I think the first place it would land would be in the Office of Legal Counsel, OLC. And that is an office that is staffed by all the lawyers who work for the Justice Department are terrific, but that is an office that is staffed by the cream of the crop. And they are really, among other things, the Attorney General's lawyers, as well as the government's lawyers in large. And they determine what the legal position should be of the government on various issues. And they would screen a submission like this to determine what, if any, response there should be to it. It would also work, I suppose, to the extent that it calls for conduct that would engage the Criminal Division. It would go to the people within the Criminal Division for their input. That could all be placed in a set of, in a memo or a set of memos to the Attorney General to determine what his response should be. And that is a process that would take, in my experience, weeks. I don't have direct experience like this, but certainly consultation within and among those units within the Justice Department would be necessary before something worked its way up to the Attorney General. I think it would also probably pass through the Office of the Deputy Attorney General for the screening. Each of those offices would have their input. And it would then wind up on the AG's desk with the question of, "What, if anything, do we do about this?"
Okay. So, a very different process than what we're at least looking at for the moment.
We are assuming that that letter precipitated this memo. It may have been designed to make it appear that it precipitated the memo. The memo itself doesn't directly mention the letter, although it deals with a suggestion of the kind of activity that is suggested in the letter. That's the only the only basis, I think, for concluding that it was the letter that generated the memo.
Is the quick timing that's a bit surprising?
The quick timing suggests that maybe all of it was in the works before the letter was written.
I think that's a good clarification. Another question relating to what you had mentioned about the civil rights statutes, that would be the opportunity for recourse. I think, I'm curious personally about the standing question. So, if a parent at a school board wanted to sue and say that the you know, this feels like a nebulous thing to sue over, I'm wondering if you could, I guess, talk about the standing issue a little bit. Another, an attendee has asked, "What organization should file the civil rights violation claim against the federal government, ACLU or another organization?" So, I'm wondering, would it be an organization that would have standing or a parent who feels unable to voice the concern if their school board is associated with like a federal enforcement effort?
I wasn't, when I mentioned the civil rights statutes, I wasn't talking about any civil recovery. There is, in Title 18, there is Section 241, which bars two or more people from acting suppress the exercise of federally guaranteed rights. That's a criminal violation. It carries a 10-year penalty. Whether there are civil remedies was something frankly that I hadn't researched, although I've certainly thought about it. Who would have standing is an excellent question. And it's a question, obviously, it's going to have to be decided by the courts when as in if somebody tries to sue. I think that issues of standing are resolved, perhaps, on a more lenient basis when we're talking about protecting federally guaranteed rights. But still, as you say, there has to be standing. So, I'm not certain who it is who would bring the civil suit, assuming a civil suit could be brought.
Okay, great. Could you, and another participant asks if you could repeat the specific federal statute sections? And I'll just type that answer into the chat for this participant.
The two statutes that I mentioned were Title 18, Section 241, which is criminal, again, it's in Title 18, so it's a criminal statute. what it says is if two or more persons conspire, it's a conspiracy statute, "to injure, oppress, threaten, or intimidate any person in any state, territory, commonwealth, possession, or district in the free exercise or enjoyment of any right or privilege secured to him by the constitutional laws of the United States, or because of his having self-exercised the same, or," and then it goes into other acts that are prohibited, "they shall be fined under this title or imprisoned, not more than 10 years, or both." Again, that's a conspiracy statute. It requires more than one act, and it requires an agreement. But interestingly, it does not require an overt act. It's a conspiracy statute where the crime is complete once the agreement is reached.
Right. That would be helpful, that would be helpful in the prosecution question. Let's turn to another question from Gerard Nussbaum. He asks, "Please discuss whether this is really a matter for state and local Leos for any actual violence or serious threats." So, I think maybe a state's rights question, police power question.
The answer to that is, of course. States and localities have disorderly conduct statutes and regulations that they enforce regularly, and the police enforce them regularly. And there's no suggestion that there's some kind of national crime wave going on here. And even if there were, as I said, I don't know what federal statute one would appeal to. But in any event, this is a matter for state and local authorities who have dealt with it as they have dealt with it. Meetings have been canceled, meetings have been changed, but that's all protected activity. And if it's to be the subject of a criminal prosecution, even a state criminal prosecution, it has to be something other than disrupting a meeting or shouting something out at a meeting. It's got to be something that is legitimately a crime, an assault or a battery. And that, again, is something that states have prosecuted and are historically empowered to protect against, not the federal government.
Is there, and this is just a question of my own, is there then a state, like a state cause of action that the federal government is overstepping in trying to take over the police power function with a, I mean, I understand that there's an interstate commerce potential question for federal jurisdiction, but does a state have to stand by and watch the federal government step into local law enforcement territory, for lack of a better word? Is there a recourse?
I don't think it's the state that would have standing to sue. And I don't know what statute, under what statute or provision they would sue. It's the person who is imposed upon by the federal government, it seems to me, who would have standing to attack to attack that imposition and to challenge the jurisdiction of the federal government to bring a prosecution, if a prosecution were brought.
Interesting. Let's, the Interesting, um, let's, the, so you had mentioned that the letter sent to the president used the term domestic terrorist. Our participant Austin Lycie asks for the legal definition of a domestic terrorist. And what burden would the government need to meet in order to legitimately label a person or group of persons domestic terrorists?
There is no definition of domestic terrorist, that's a, it's a figure of speech.
Quick answer, great.
And it's an attempt to tar people uh with the terrorist label.
Let's see, I think the same participant asks, does the DOJ currently collect any statistics on school board related crimes, threats, et cetera?
Um. Well, not that I'm aware of, although this memo directs that there be meetings uh to collect that information. So I guess they're going to. I mean, if, if, if the meetings in fact wind up being held. Memo, memo says, um. Talks that it directs that there be meetings that will facilitate. Uh, the discussion of strategies for addressing threats against school administrators, board members. Teachers and staff and will open dedicated lines of communication for threat reporting, assessment and response. So it sounds like somebody loses in the information gathering business among other things.
Right. Um, up until now, has there been an effort, do you know, to execute the memo's instructions? I know this is very recent, it's a developing issue, so maybe it's too early to say.
I have, I would, I would have no particular way of knowing, I mean, I, other than reading the newspaper.
Right. Let's see, we do have a lot of questions coming in, so I'm gonna scroll through and see, um. Okay, a question from participant Andrew Block, he asks, assuming this was all pre-baked. What is the takeaway? Is there an ethical issue? I know you'd mentioned the conflict of interest possibility. Um, it obviously brings in political corruption to the law enforcement process, but there, are there any other concrete issues that could arise?
Well, other than, um. The, the um. The, the attempt to suppress um political dissent, I mean, that's, if that's what this is about. Um, and there, and there's no, and it appears there's no uh. Other basis, uh no, certainly no, no good faith uh claim of, of a prosecutable federal crime. Um, then one wonders whether, whether um. The point here is, is to have uh the process uh have an effect. Uh, without actually bringing any prosecutions, because no prosecutions can be brought. That is outrageous overage.
Um, turning back to the domestic terrorist question, um. And you can differ on this answer or not, because you did speak to this already, that it doesn't have an exact legal definition, especially in this, this context, um. Would you like to comment on the, the expansion of the use of the designation of domestic terrorists to apply to broader groups of people? And the way in which this may allow the federal government greater le, leeway in investigation and charging of individuals or groups?
I think um the federal government has jurisdiction um to investigate crimes. Um, that uh. Where, where um the commission of the acts uh in fact crosses state lines um to investigate. Um, planning a, planning a bomb is to investigate um and, and plans to do so to investigate. Uh, plans to commit violence, um. But um it doesn't have, um, they, they have to be, they have to be. Um, contained um within, within particular statutes, um and uh. It's not a, it's not a, it's not a general police power, um. Again, um, I mean, the, the, the federal government investigates all manner of, 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 of violent crimes. But only those um uh that, that cross state lines. And um otherwise affect uh have, have a legitimate basis in, in, in statute. Disorderly conduct and trespassing um at school board meetings um are not among those crimes.
I wonder, and this is my own question then, is there, um, obviously I don't know this area very well, is there a Patriot Act? Question, like if, if a, a group is labeled domestic terrorists, then would their Fourth Amendment rights be? Um, less protected or like subject to a different balancing test of privacy interests, is that a possibility?
The fourth, the fourth, uh, the, the Patriot Act um does not itself define any, any, any crimes. What it does is make available uh to authorities investigating. Um, um, investigating actual terrorist acts. Um, certain uh techniques that are available to, for example, narcotics investigations like. Um, uh roving warrants, uh in other words, if you get a, if you get a warrant. Uh, to, to tap a particular phone and uh the, the, the user of the phone uh throws it away and gets another phone. Um, absent a specific authorization, uh you would have to go back and get another warrant. Um, the Patriot Act allows a warrant to switch from one phone to another. Depending on, on whether it's the, the, the user uh who is the subject of the surveillance. Um, it makes available those kinds of uh investigative techniques. Uh, obtaining of records, um, but it's not, it's not a, it's not a statute that defines yeah any crime. It's not an independent basis for exercising uh, for exercising jurisdiction.
Okay, I think that at least, you know, based on reading the news and thinking about these issues as they're occurring, that's certainly a concern for. Um, for parents, if the, if the term is, if the term domestic terrorists is being used, then that kind of. Um, possibility is certainly of concern that a different type of law enforcement. Mechanism could be used just because they're being labeled with the term, um, I don't know if that, if that came across as clearly as I intended, but. Um, interesting, very interesting, um, let's see, I think. The next, there are many people who are asking about the. Like what kind of recourse is available, and I know that you had discussed, there's the criminal conspiracy statute. There's the possibility of a civil suit depending on the standing question. And depending on what organization would have standing or would be like best poised to bring that type of suit, um. So let's see. Um, Devin West still asks, asks, um. How, how can the public hold the administration accountable for such egregious behavior, which I think is probably a question that is on the minds of many. Another attendee asks, um. Uh, let's see, Theresa Cola asks, could a parent who objects to a possible school board action that is to be considered at an open meeting? Who's fearful of speaking because of possible punishment under the state's action that appears calculated to chill free speech? Um, so I, I wonder if you could provide like maybe a general comment on the, the free speech implications. Um. Of the, at least the apparent free speech implications.
Well, the apparent free speech implications of the memo uh are, are, are fairly dire. Um, the, however, the, the one cause for hope here is that there has been substantial pushback. And there continues to be substantial pushback, um as far as how you hold people accountable. Uh, we're still a democracy, you hold people accountable in elections.
Right.
That's, that's how you hold them accountable.
Right.
And um in raising your voice and urging others to do the same, um and in not being, and in not being intimidated. Um.
Yep, very true, and that would be true for school, school board elections as well as federal and state elections.
Correct.
A lot of people who are being voted out of school board positions based on their behavior, which is exactly. Uh, this is my personal opinion, obviously, but I think that's exactly what, what should be happening. Uh, let's see. I apologize, I'm reading through the, the many comments, everyone's very interested in this topic, so you've given people a lot to think about, um, let's see. Oh, this is an interesting question, um from Jenny Gannon, who asks, once the feds collect data, so investigate, haven't they overstepped jurisdiction? And then those involved in data collection might have standing for a civil case. So just the data collection, because I know you'd mentioned earlier that the letter suggests that there would be a data collection effort. Um, and there was another question earlier about whether the DOJ keeps track of um. Stats about public schools, would that data collection all by itself be overstepping jurisdiction?
Well, if it's, if, if they're collecting data, um and it's not in aid of any legitimate. Uh, function of the Justice Department, um or in aid of bringing any cases the Justice Department could bring. Um, then um, there's a very good basis to object to the accumulation of the data. Um, and the maintenance of the data.
Great, another question about jurisdiction, and I was also curious about this too, um. Is the, the federal jurisdiction prom, for lack of a better word, connected with communicating online? That by, like by nature of email or phone call or texting, is that type of communication automatically? The kind of hook necessary to get federal jurisdiction, so if parents are discussing a school board. Um dissatisfaction over their school board's recent decision online or over the phone. How does that impact the jurisdiction question? Because it would still be a local law enforcement. Issue if it's a harassment question or if it's a assault question, but then.
It's conceivable that if somebody uses a means in interstate commerce to transmit an actual threat. Uh, a physical harm, that could conceivably engage federal jurisdiction, but again, we're not. We're not talking about that kind of activity here, and there's been no suggestion, uh, no citation. Um, to a specific instance of such activity.
Right.
And certainly discussing school board meetings and discussing what goes on at school board meetings. Uh, doesn't confer jurisdiction on anybody to investigate those conversations.
Right, I think that's a, a great, um. A great clear, or a great point to focus on, particularly because. I, I, I don't know if you want to comment a little bit on the, um, the story out of Loudoun County that was. Why, I mean, to my knowledge, it broke pretty recently regarding the, the dad who was. For a lot of people, the face of the quote-unquote domestic terrorism issue. And more facts came to light and clearly that was not the case, um, so it's not even. It's not the actual threats are being, are being, um, what was the term, be, um, being transmitted online or being transmitted over the internet. It would just be communication that is not a crime that the federal government could investigate, if I, is that the, is that the, the way to think about it?
That's, yeah, that's the way to think about it, I mean, this, the, the, the person you referred to. Uh, was a man who um has claimed that his daughter was raped uh in a, in a bathroom. Uh, by a uh, uh, by a man wearing a skirt and um. The uh, the Loudoun County School Board, uh, um, I believe has, has. Either denied that it knew about the incident or denied that the incident occurred. Um, in any event, he was trying to make it known to the school board that it had occurred. Um, there was apparently another young woman who was attacked similarly in another school, uh by the same. Person who was transferred to another school after uh the first incident occurred, um. That kind of thing, um. I mean, to say that it's not terrorism is, 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 is an understatement. Um, that, that is, that, that the father's attempt to communicate uh his displeasure with the school board. Um, he has every right to do that. And to make him, as you say, the face of domestic terrorism, uh is, is uh, is outrageous and undercuts the entire claim. That we're dealing with here, uh is anything that could probably be described as terrorism.
Right, which makes it seem much more like a, a direct, directed towards chilling free speech as opposed to actually. Addressing any type of real threat or any type of real danger, um. Here's a question from, uh, from another attendee who asks about nineteen eighty-three civil rights claim. Um, which perhaps a parent could have standing to bring, um, what are your thoughts on that initial reaction?
Um, it's been a while since I read nineteen eight, section nineteen eighty-three, um. The um, the person, I mean, they would, part of the problem is you'd have to show damage. Uh, and real impact and um being fearful, um. I don't think gets you, gets you far enough, um, if somebody could, I suppose, could show that. Um, that others uh were um discouraged from, from participating in an activity that. That, 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 that they all wanted to participate in, uh, that might conceivably confer standing. Uh, but again, it's been a while since I read nineteen eighty-three in the case of.
I'm wondering specifically in the context of that, the parent, because I did a little bit of reading um before this discussion and. I think that he was threatened by another parent that his business. So he was wearing a shirt representing his business, and his business was going to suffer because of the entire interaction, and I wonder if he could show. Um, if, if he could show like negative impact to his business, that that type of damage would be. I don't know if there's a, like a causal connection that it would need to be. I, I, I don't know, I don't know if that's the type.
I think, I think, what's happening is, is, is simply a private, a private boycott, I don't think that's covered by nineteen eighty-three.
Okay. Um, I apologize, I had a phone ringing there for a moment, um, let's see, another. Another question, I'm not familiar with this statute, um eighteen USC two forty-one. I don't believe that's the, the statute that you'd referenced earlier, the.
It is.
It is, oh, I apologize, okay, um, this questioner asks, uh. If they could use that statute section. Um, could the FBI or US Attorney's Office take that action? So I guess that leads me to, to wonder. I mean, that, using that statute, there's not a private right of action to enforce a criminal statute. There, you would have to convince a US attorney or the FBI to take criminal action against.
Against the Attorney General and others who participated with it, um, that's um quite a lift.
And it's quite a lift, uh, let's see, another.
You know, there's another consideration here, which is that, I suppose, um, and this is, I'm just theorizing, I'm not advocating. Um, that if um control of the House of Representatives changed. Um, in twenty twenty-two, such that the House Judiciary Committee. Um, would consider um the attempt to um. Suppress dissent as uh, and the potential violation of, of two forty-one as a high crime and misdemeanor. Whether they would consider articles of impeachment against the Attorney General, now I'm not encouraging that. Uh, I'm simply pointing out that it's a possibility.
Right, no, it's very interesting, this does seem to be an area that calls for some out of the box, um, out of the box thinking. Um, I think this goes back to something that we were discussing a little bit earlier. The question about jurisdictional overreach, so like federal jurisdictional overreach. Um, would a state AG or a state DA be able to raise a federalism violation against the DOJ? For bringing suit against harassing state citizens exercising federal and state rights to core political speech? This comes from David Vandenberg.
I think the answer to that is no.
Yeah, okay, why would that be?
Simply because um the. The state DA uh would be, or, or local DA would be, would be enforcing a right that actually is, belongs to the person against whom. Uh, the pro, the federal prosecution is brought, and it's that person, um. Not, not, not the state AG who has, who has standing.
It's not a third party, I apologize, a third party standing issue or anything like that, um, sorry, my question, well.
But maybe I'm not being imaginative enough.
Um, let's see, I think that that, I, I know we do have a lot of questions, but I think that at least some of them. Have been touched upon already, so uh with that, I think I'll hand the floor over to you. Judge McCasey for closing comments or anything like that, I, I recognize that we've perhaps tried on the same grounds um a couple of times over, but. I'm very appreciative for you taking the time to discuss this, because clearly there's been quite a bit of interest from our audience, so. Please do take some time to, to wrap.
I like, I would like to think that um this memo is um uncharacteristic of. The person who wrote it, um, it's certainly uncharacteristic of the Justice Department. Um, if what it portends is that um the federal government. Um, and the current administration are intent on using um threats of. um, and the current administration are intent on using um, threats of, of, of federal criminal prosecution or, or using threats of investigation uh, to uh, suppress and discourage uh, political expression, then we've, we've come, we've gone a long way in the wrong direction. And I think that calling attention to this, um, and pushing back against it is really the, the major recourse. It's the only recourse. And um, I would encourage those who are, who have strong feelings about the subject, uh, to make sure that they're heard.
Great. Um, well, this was absolutely excellent. Thank you so much for the time. I'd like to thank you on behalf of Federalist Society. I'd like to thank our audience for participating and sending in questions. Um, these, all of the views that were expressed this afternoon are views of the speakers and not of the Federalist Society. If you do have any questions or comments, um, please feel free to send those in to our email address, info@fed-sock.org, and we welcome your comments. Um, please keep an eye on your emails for upcoming announcements about future webinars. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.